All right.
I'd like to lead the flag.
The United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Officially, we're officially open for business. Let's pay some bills, put budgets for admin.
Okay, bills are coming around, payroll is coming around, split payroll for the end of the fiscal year, where there's additional forms. Now, it is, had approved pending final wording from covenant for the orchard. Back and forth whether all the lots, including number one and number 21, which are on Griss Mill Road, if those should be included in the covenant.
If they're.
Well, yeah, I told, Chris said that number one definitely should be in, but number 21 has exactly the same frontage as off of Griss Mill, and it doesn't have to be included.
But isn't it, we're doing the covenant because it's all beat into a shared system, right?
Well, it's not, wouldn't get a building permit without having this system.
Well, what are we doing the covenant for in the first place?
It's for construction of the roadway and the other utilities.
Lots of stuff.
So it isn't for sharing the system.
Yeah. There's a clause in the covenant that protects the town from having one of these lots changed to a road to access weather.
No, not in the covenant.
Where is that?
That's in the decision. The covenant is what the town and the developer agree that the developer's going to do the work as shown on the plans. And you need lot releases before you can get building permits, so.
Right, so we'll leave that one in and take the other one out.
Yeah, that's.
If it's still a.
That's what they're really pushing for.
Still theoretically an A and R.
That's a cross.
No, it's on the same side of the road.
Yeah, lot number 21 is the one that they really would like to not be in the covenant.
Right, this one, that's across the road.
But it's on Griss Mill, that's my point. There's all the frontage there. Doesn't it have the easement clause that fixes everything going?
There are easements, but easements are separate documents. I know, I argue with Chris.
All right, so we're not going to fight about, all right, we'll do one, but we won't do 21.
Why is it plowed for Richard's Way? What the hell is that?
Oh, that's a fun one. That's where the town took the bond to finish the rest of the roadway, and it included all maintenance up until it was accepted as a townway, so.
Do we have money left to leave it back to?
No, there won't be any left.
Isn't that funny how exactly zeroed them out?
Didn't we say we were going to do that? He actually tapped in, we would owe us money.
Oh, really?
Oh, babe.
Which one's Richard's Way?
Um.
The one that was behind Howard's, the one that went into that little field by the house, our colonial, we probably don't even know it's there.
Jimmy, is that the one that they didn't fix the road and they didn't finish the island in the middle?
Yep, yep, and highway department did a lot of work out there and did all the maintenance.
Yeah.
And who was the contractor there? Who was the developer himself? He's subcontractor.
Yeah.
Who was the developer?
He did a very poor job on the road.
Who? Applewood Construction from Tinkelman?
That's not the same guy that's up on Harvard Road, right?
No, not that, no.
That's Apple something, is it?
Apple sauce.
Yeah. I thought his company's called Apple something, too.
No, the other one, John Papadoro, he is. Yeah, he's a different.
Oh, he's Apple that one?
Yeah.
Yeah. And the town council, Chris Heath asked that staff hold the plan until Mr. Heath approves the release of the plan. That's a Dutch or thing?
Yeah.
What was, what is that all about?
Terry, how you doing?
Is that something?
He hasn't.
Who has it?
Dutch has it.
Well, is that something we can do that to the orchards or whatever the other thing is?
Yeah, I still have theirs.
Town council approves all those things before?
No, this was a litigating. We wanted to make sure everything was all set, we got the proper releases. Now, this was in the middle of the litigation, so just wanted to make sure Chris had everything all set and well. They got it the next morning, Chris just had to be satisfied that everyone was all set.
It's not unusual.
We don't normally sign them and hand them to them right then and there, especially something like that.
Right, usual A and Rs you do, but.
Well, yeah, A and Rs in terms.
Litigation and subdivisions never, because you have to record the covenant with the subdivision.
Do we have the A and R for White Street?
We do. Before you get there, the minutes from May 16th and 30th.
You seem fine. I like, especially on the 30th, where it's stated explicitly, I guess the other one, where it's stated explicitly to the county road that there's rights for it to pass and repass by the term for the lectures, but it's a lot less than pass, that's been an issue. It's not so recorded in there. I have no issue with it being announced.
Make motion for seven minutes as written.
Second.
Second, so you're all in favor?
Aye.
Good, we're moving, we're fine. So this is the A and R that actually, well, everybody TV done, that gives the land on White Street back to Park and Rec.
Well, it divides it, there's nobody giving.
Well, it divides it, this parcel is going back, so that there's a possibility that it can be used for recreational use as opposed to all being conserved.
Right.
And so who's filing the A and R?
The conservation, property owner conservation commission has signed the application. They put the new lot line, dividing line, right where the wetland sign was going. Parcel A1 will remain with conservation. A2 will go to Parker Rec if everything's followed through from town to you vote.
So it's just moving a lot.
No, adding a new line.
Adding a new one, separating this piece. Remember, this was all one.
Right.
So they had no line in getting this.
Right, well, that's what I meant, that's the one, right.
That's it, okay. What do we sign, just the Mylar or?
Sign them all, right?
Yeah, you can sign them all, that's pretty good. If you need to vote.
Yep, this is the accommodation that we came through with conservation. It was very nice conservation to sign it.
You should vote on it.
It was very nice of the conservation to agree to this.
Well, it was a misunderstanding, finally after two years, it's been resolved.
And most of their delineation, I know that was an issue, it's all due to that.
No, that's no.
Do you have a pin for the Mylar?
No, but that was a question of this.
No, that was wetlands line on the plans previously.
I guess technically I need to take a vote on that.
Sure, I'll move it.
So move second.
A and R.
The A and R for the back end.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think you don't sign it.
Any questions?
No?
No.
I don't think you're allowed to talk down.
It's partially related to this. We're going to be working in Cone Park on Saturday, hopefully volunteers working on the trail, we're cleaning up the park. There's a right of way to the White Street housing that takes you across to the, what will be now playing field, and I'm not sure that that's delineated very well. Looks like it's going between, quite technically, between two houses.
It's a full car gap.
Is there? I was going to ask.
That's a right of way, it's not going the way to.
Yeah. I know, I didn't know whether it's been brought up.
That's right away.
It doesn't look like there may be landscaping comfort. I'm not sure of that.
I don't know if we've made a.
Are you talking about crossing the street?
It goes right to that crossing directly from White Street.
Because, I mean, if.
There's even more.
This is the wetlands part, right?
Yeah.
There's a bridge there, too.
Yeah, this is, so somehow it goes through here, but we're going to be in Cone Park, which is over here, and I was thinking that I was going to, we have, we've done it before, we mowed along the edge of the wetland and over, and I may try to do that on Saturday, but I was just curious about this one, too, whether I should try to get involved in helping out with that.
But there's no, yeah, really, there's no impact to this.
That's conservation.
And even if you went down the.
It doesn't, it's not really, it's not, the change is nothing, but this becomes more public, and, so that this becomes more important for people who want to come over to look.
You can run this whole line, you wouldn't impact anything. If you ran your trail, you can run here, I mean, you can.
It's already existing. It goes, we've been mowing this field, if we hadn't been mowing that, that would be a mess, but, but we haven't been keeping up this trail very well, and so we may get a chance to do it on Saturday, but I was just wondering about this, as looking at it, it looks like the houses are very close together.
Yeah, yeah.
To go through.
If they can, peed that easement.
No, I'm not really sure it's a.
There isn't easement there.
There is an easement, but it's not, I don't think it's a public.
Yeah.
I thought it was to get back to the brook so that if they wanted to look at it and do something to the brook, I don't think it's, I think it's more of a utility easement than it is a public.
Rick, are you, do you mow that?
I think it's in public for a lot.
No, we don't, we don't, Cone Park, which is up here.
No, but you said something about mowing?
Mowing, yeah, well, we were trying to, we're trying to maintain a trail so people who used to walk the dogs when they were small, haven't been able to do it lately, we haven't been mowing.
All right, we have, I want to discuss real quick before we get into the congre. The congregational church. I had, Myron and I had a meeting with members of the church, including, okay, Myron, help me, Warren Terrell.
Warren Terrell.
About, we're talking, remember when they came in about a month ago, we told them we didn't see a problem with them being at like 44% in curvix and here with repairs? Well, they don't really want to be that high, they want to try to do the best they can to not set precedent to try to keep it about where it is now. We talked about it, you know, one of the scenarios was the actual taking of the rights of Mr. Wiskowski's land in the back, buying the development rights to it in order to get them down to the 44 or 30%.
Increase the size there.
Increase in the size, but it's really totally useless land, it's, you know, there were those two scenarios that he did. And then we talked about, and it's maybe called a fortuitous or whatever you want, there the church has just sold the land up on top of, to the town, okay, and they also, but they're in the middle of it, but they also, they had residents, members of the church buy down, the sale price down to.
That's right.
At $415,000 so that it became affordable for the town to buy it. So I suggested that we use the difference, the sale price was going to be 450, we used the $35,000 that they paid to buy down the price to get it so that the town could buy, to use that as them buying some of the development rights to that property up there so we can tie that to here, so that.
Connect it to the, and you've talked about sort of informal transfer of development rights.
Informal transfer of development rights.
Which has been done previous.
Which we have done before.
Could you explain that one more time?
Let me give it to you one more time. They're trying to, they could take the money and buy the development rights to the, to the land right behind them that Dr. Wiskowski owns.
This is the congregational.
This is the congregational church. They want to put a little addition on here and an addition here, and it's, they're at.
But they want to park the lot.
The park the lot isn't changing, that's all staying the same.
Well, they're going to extend it a little bit.
A little bit.
They're at 44% now. The bylaw would let them stay at 44%, but it's really, would be a stretch to, for them to increase the impervious there.
Right, okay, so one of the questions was whether to do these, one of these scenarios where they, because it's contiguous to them to buy the development rights to the pieces of land behind them with Dr. Wiskowski. What I suggested, because they've already basically done, they bought the development rights and donated it to the town, and they actually paid, members of the church, the congregation, paid $35,000, they're kicking in $35,000 to bring the sale price from 450 down to 415 so that the town can buy it. My suggestion was that we could set aside a certain amount of land to keep this at 44% because they've already given the $35,000 basically as taking up the development rights for that seven acres that they're selling to the town. It's not contiguous, it's, you know, it's, we've never, we've never sat on the fact of having contiguous to the site next to it as a show of good faith because they had a show of good faith into working with the town to buy those seven acres. Does the board want to do it that way or put them through one more hardship of actually having to come up with some more money to have to buy the development rights from Dr. Wiskowski?
Wait, just, but just back up to the beginning. We said we would give them.
They don't want to do it.
An exemption, and they don't want the exemption.
You don't have the right, you don't have the right to grant that.
We can't, we got to leave it at 44%.
We don't have the right.
No.
And they don't want to go that route.
Appeals board.
The appeals board?
Yeah.
They don't want to do that.
They don't really want to.
So in lieu of that, we can basically say it's a wash, you can have the development rights to Wiskowski's wetlands, and that's it.
Or we could use the land that's up there that they also own up, they still own it, up on.
But you sell it.
Which will be protected account.
Wait, wait, wait.
So it won't be.
The top of the hill.
Yeah.
Sold. We already bought it.
Yeah, now we haven't bought it.
But we have in the past papers.
No, what?
December 15th.
We've approved.
We've approved the town meeting to buy for 415. And the sale price was 450, residents of the church paid the money.
It was.
Paid the money.
It was a stretch at 415 regardless.
No.
Yeah, it was.
Whatever.
When you put something on it, and once you do what you got to do to it.
So the 415, they got, they got all their money. They already got $415,000 for that land, correct? I don't know what they paid for it, but that's what they, that's what they got. Whether you bought it down, $35,000, I don't want to put one more encumbrance on a piece of property that the town owns for whatever it is, development rights or whatever else. I'd rather leave that alone and deal with the contiguous property with the church the way it is.
There's no encumbrance.
There's no encumbrance.
Purchase or sales is for agricultural purposes, which means it isn't going to get paved over, so if anything, that is already an encumbrance.
It's just, it's just acknowledging the fact that they spent $35,000 to buy the price down so that the town could buy it, to approve at a town meeting, to use the money to, we're just trying, we originally were going to give them at 44%, so we're basically coming up with another alternative rather than have them have to come out of their pocket and maybe have to buy some more of the development money from Dr. Wiskowski, that's all I suggested. You don't like it because it's not contiguous, I assume that.
I don't like it if it's not contiguous, I don't like that.
The money is, they got all the money that they need for that.
Yeah, it makes, it makes it much more understandable to anybody, looking back at this, if it's two separate, you know, two separate arrangements, two separate deals. The town buys one parcel, and then these people have to deal with this and this as its own standalone issue.
What's the church doing, is that what he is? They'll do whatever we tell them to, they don't really want to, but they will approach Dr. Wiskowski.
That's another obligation.
It's another obligation to them, yeah.
So they're already, so it's stretching out naturally, so this forces them to buy something.
We originally said.
Would they be, would they be paying cash for this to Chris?
I have no idea. They haven't really negotiated with Dr. Wiskowski.
We met this, we're already talking about this kind of swap to this bylaw that we're talking about, what happened to the pledge. So what, I mean, what's, what's the, what's the downside?
That's.
No downside.
It doesn't seem.
The downside is that it's not contiguous, that it's not close to the parcel that it's being related to, but.
But there's been a history.
We've done it before, it's digital.
The idea is to try and make, well, how are you going to make sure that the land next to it, obviously it's very wet, there's not much you can do with.
We can't build on that land.
I know.
It, we only need it for the square.
But they don't own the land, somebody else does. You can't use somebody else's land to improve yours, correct?
No, 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 that's not true.
What do you mean, no?
That's what, you were in the meeting, I mean, you're on the committee, that's the whole concept behind being able to go off to another piece of property you own, buy the development rights, remove you being able to develop the lot that you really want to develop.
It doesn't have to be next door, it could be anywhere in town, that's what we're talking about, in the future. This would be the first time we've actually done it where it wasn't contiguous.
I don't believe that other part was, was, had to deal with the impervious of the property.
We're giving them a seven acre offset to the non-continuous land that they own.
Who cares?
It's combining two things.
Okay, I'll give you a better example. I'll give you, when we did the police station, okay, we combined, in order to get the septic to fit on the police station, we took the land that we bought from the Hartwell piece and had a long skinny piece that went behind everybody's house and went 160 acres into the woods, that was the, there were houses in between it and everything else like that. It wasn't, it's not as far as this, don't get me wrong, but it wasn't.
I'm on the fence on this.
You'd be, you'd be hard pressed to call it contiguous. We did that so that we could get this, we could get the present impervious because the right of passage people go out and the septic's in for their flows. So we did it over there for the town, but this is sort of the same thing. If, if you guys don't, I don't have a problem if you want them to go back and have to talk to Dr. Wiskowski and deal with this at a later date, I didn't think that, you know.
The question is, is that unnecessary?
Is it necessary?
An extra obligation, like.
Let's, let me have them come back and give us a couple of options that they're willing to do, and then we can talk about it.
Well, this is the options, they'll just have, give us something formal from Dr. Wiskowski where they can, they can.
But they're not, they're not proposing to use the seven acres on top of the hill as an offset.
They have no, no, they're selling it to the town.
No, I know that.
I came up with the idea because they were buying down the price of it, they were actually buying down the development rights so that the town.
Right, but that's our idea, not their idea.
Well, no, we're putting.
Well, they weren't, they weren't opposed to it, let's put it that way.
I mean, they raised the money for that intentionally.
Well, it's a little farther away.
That's closing the bar and door after they're all out.
We're just talking about.
Fine, we'll tell them.
Just table it and do it.
No, they want it, they want to proceed forward, and they don't want any loose ends, they want to keep it at 44%. We'll tell them to come up with a scenario with Dr. Wiskowski, we'll have both scenarios. Come up with a scenario up there, come up with a scenario at Dr. Wiskowski's.
Right, actually, he's got a couple different.
He's got a small drawing there.
Have them at least talk to Wiskowski and then come back to us.
Yeah.
You know, explore it, if it's, if it's going to be a.
As a person, I already have done.
We don't want in any way.
Informal, I don't think they've ever formally done it, so we'll have them formally talk to Dr. Wiskowski, see what can be arranged, and then people from there.
I know, I don't want it in any way impede the process that the church wants to do, but I want to make it clean enough, so.
Why don't they want to go to the ZBNA, just get an exemption?
We don't really want to do it that way, we don't want to be up.
They're going to be up. That'll be anymore, so let's just keep that.
We were going to do it just because it was a church and it's an innocuous year.
Yeah, what's wrong with that?
It's set precedent, their engineer doesn't want to do it because they're afraid somebody's going to shoot it down once they've done all this work and say, wait, is it?
Oh, all right.
So they, even just because we say it's okay, somebody else might not say it's okay. That's what the issue is. Really want to protect it, you know, protect the church as well as protect the town. Okay, well, that, that went nowhere fast. All right, we have a 7:25 update from the point, I hope Mr. Park gets me out of this very quick.
No, I'll just put it up here on the chair. Hi, good to see everyone. I thought today we would, you know, we are pretty much locking in now on vertical construction, and so I thought it'd be a good idea to give you an idea of what we're, where we are still. It's not a lot new, I think I'll re-brief you every couple weeks and take up some of your time, but I know since the planning board is most interested in, you know, the design and the development, we would share with that. We will be able to share also with some of the types of tenants that we are in dialogue with, and the reasons why those, we think those make sense. But before we do that, let me just give a quick overview, because here's where we are schedule-wise, and that's the most important thing. Schedule-wise is we have foundations started for the whole first phase, buildings A, B, we're getting, we were just completing the contract drawings for D, E, and F, and G, and what those are are basically, A, B, C, D, E, F, and G are what we view as phase one. Building C, I'm sorry, I don't know if everyone wishes to see it, but this is the plan for the point, so what we have then is, basically, if you go out there today, it's hard not to miss the site, you can see that the grades have pretty much been stepped the way we expect to have them stepped long-term, which is what we call P1, the entry level, then P2, one step up, then P3, one step up from there. up, then P three, one step up from there, with P three being the phase two, which we have two variations that we're still exploring, all consistent with the existing permits. Since the project is fully permitted at this point, we're really been focused on leasing and contract drawings and also the administrative process of actually ordering steel. Foundations are in for A, they're now progressing on to B, and they will be beginning D, E, and F sometime in probably eight weeks. And it's really a staging area because we have different crews coming on board and trying to keep them in lockstep with construction. I think our end game is to basically have a real opening in some time and although some of the buildings may be nearing completion this fall, candidly, this weather we have outside has caused us a good eight-week delay, nine-week delay, just because of the extended winter and the extended rainfall. Plus, you know, we've been working closely with the Concom to try to keep the, you know, all the stormwater issues, which has been proving difficult because of the size of the development. But in that said, we have the wastewater treatment plant, which is located back here, actually not shown, it's under construction. All the, you know, that plant had been promised some years ago, we've, that really serves our site. I know there's some discussions with, you know, grander plans for the town and what have you, but that plant really serves our site. We're funding it solely and it should be up and running, I think, by October or November. It has been designed to be expandable so that, you know, for example, I know one of our neighbors has asked if they can tie into it and we haven't been adverse to that, so we would, you know, allow that. We think ultimately if we are gonna build a plant, it's helpful for some people to have access to it if it reduces sort of what they call, I guess, the nitrate loadings on the wetlands. So where we can be helpful, we are. But in terms of the plan itself, our schedule then is to basically have all foundations in place over the next ninety days with steel up at different levels. We would hope that by springtime, these will all be enclosed in, actually, we're hoping they'll be enclosed in before the winter so that all the interior work can happen over the winter. We had tried to move forward towards a fall opening, but I think our inclination is now with the tenant mix we're looking to get, to try to get the restaurants and the shops open at the same time so the whole experience is in place, and if it means only some of the tenants up for a couple of months, that's probably what we're willing to do. The other good news is we've actually had input from hotels. We have two hotel operators, Hilton and Marriott, that both expressed interest. They aren't sure quite yet which flag. I think they were shocked to come out here and see the amount of work that has actually gone on. I will tell you, they, in our communications with Hilton and Marriott, they were very thankful for the overlay zoning district because a lot of the hotel operators get very concerned about the nuances of, you know, are hotels allowed or not allowed in the use. So I think the foresight that the selectman, the planning board, and the town votes had in terms of approving the overlay district made our job a lot easier, getting, you know, getting their interest key. We're intending to place the hotel at this point, although we've had interest for this building, this building, and actually that building, and the fact that there might even be two hotels, we are currently thinking this was probably the right location for the hotel because it has highway visibility, but it really depends a little bit on which brand and shows up the table for this pad. We wanna make sure it's a good entry pad. So that's basically the overall plan, which I will leave perhaps up here if anyone wants to see it.
It's the best we can do for an easel tonight.
That will, hopefully that way at least everyone after I talk about it can see it. From an aerial view, this is, you know, if you were to fly in at low height, you'd basically see, this was really, you'll never see this view because you can't be a hundred feet in the air, but what it's trying to show is how the, the site sort of steps up in the site. So it's really showing, it's intended more to be pictorial of, you know, the gable roofs, the dormers, the towers, some of the treatments. You know, we have a, a techier look as we intend for the main street side with the bigger buildings, and we've tried to maintain, you know, the platform-sided dormer side, but at the same time, making sure that it, the two pieces work off each. So this is, our theme for this project is where history meets technology, which we define as the Think Belt. Four ninety-five from Route two to Route three is really where technology has set itself in as a, you know, has landed. You know, you have IBM, we've kept them abreast, they're very excited about this for their employees, they in fact, one of their, in discussions with them, they have clearly indicated their employees are looking for this thing to be someone who will help anger that quarter. So again, that's all working well. Specific, you know, it's hard to see those buildings, so I'll just go through each view. As you enter in the site, first view you might see it, and the reason we can now do this is these are now at contract drawings, the steel has been designed, and actually the steel is being ordered, we're getting ready to start bidding the project out in different phases. We haven't decided whether to have three contractors, two contractors, individual contractors. But as you come in, because of the way the grades step up, as always planned, you know, the one side is sort of a two-story look because it feeds off the lower part, and then the second floor is really accessed from the other side, which is a higher elevation. But you can kinda see we've created this pedestrian front with gables, dormers, and street trees, and a little peak through alleyways that will actually connect the centers. If you were to, you know, look at the roadway, maybe it's better if I keep it on the site plan. If you were to, for example, walk up this roadway here, now just to show that we've been very careful to design buildings that have three-D views, so we're not, you know, one of, I know one of the planning goals was to minimize the nakedness of sidewalls. So by connecting all these buildings, we're able to, you know, really accent, these buildings are intended to be three-dimensional buildings that you can actually walk around and experience, and these are really, these are artwork study sketches so that we can make sure that they feel pedestrian scale. But this is the road kinda climbing up to the second level, again, getting a feel for how the buildings are stepping up. If you were going up the main road here, you know, we've also tried to make sure that the buildings have, and this is one of the things with the, you know, the overlay allowing for the zoning, you know, the special permit allowing for the signage to be consistent with retail, but it starts to show you how we can actually integrate the signing into the buildings so that you end up having a more colorful, more vibrant feel. Windows, glass, signage, and greenscape is really what makes the project look attractive, at least in our opinion. So as you go up the road, you know, we tried to put these little, what I call beacons of, you know, so as you drive up the road, you see different things that keep you entertained and, you know, you're visually excited as you go into the center and draws you up to, to the next level. And as you get to the next level, which is looking inside this area here from the main road, you'd see this. It's again, now that you're on the, again, with these buildings, C and D and E, the lower level here is accessed from this side of the parking lot, and the upper, the second floor is accessed from this side of the parking lot. So what that's really allowed us to do is, you know, compress it as opposed to just, you know, overly single-story everywhere, we've actually been able to stack some of this retail, which I think creates a nicer, you know, look as opposed to a single-story box. But you can see where at this level, it feels like a one-story building, and again, you know, honoring the need for the dormers and some techie little things inside, but most importantly, you'll notice, we've really tweaked or improved the pedestrian streetscape. Wherever you see these little red dots and umbrellas, that's supposed to be sort of like the walkway that allows you to kind of, where you would see, you know, restaurants or amenity space or chess tables, or things that will allow people to just sort of sit and relax. So that's sort of pedestrian, and you can see that it's really basically a system that has around building G, the main courtyard coming in, a cute little walkway that runs in, ties into a very, I call it extravagant only because I saw the price yesterday, pedestrian, plaza area on these buildings, then connected into all the areas that we have sort of like knuckles and what have you. And so you can start seeing where we're envisioning food service because wherever there's umbrellas, we're hoping there will be some restaurant uses. And if you're looking now at building, building B, even the, the larger box buildings, which might be facing this way, we tried to break them down with individual elements and make the facade, doesn't feel like one giant box all the way across the front. So we have entry elements that could shift back and forth depending on what the final leasing breakdown is. They have awnings, pedestrian light poles, street trees, benches, and what have you. And that kind of starts to connect buildings E, D, C, all the way around, I mean, E, D, B, and C, sort of a pedestrian streetscape. And then as we get to phase two, again, this is a working size, so we know what, you know, how all the spaces relate. Phase two is meant to be office, entertainment, retail, and the two possibilities will be cinema, which we are in dialogue right now with two national cinema chains. The trick for us is we don't wanna build a mega cinema, we wanna build a nice six-to-eight screen theater, which we think fits better. So this is probably half the size of what you might see in terms of a, some of the larger ones, but I think it fits scale-wise. You'll also notice that we turned the cinema sideways because one of the problems that cinemas have is that they are very open and expansive in one direction, whereas we had thought about placing them here, by doing it here, you're able to sort of bring down, no one's gonna see the sides now, they'll see a smaller front door. It's a little more expensive to build this type of building, so we're still that part of the negotiation, but it, it creates a nice potential for the end of the, sort of the, the center. There's also the possibility that we don't wanna preclude for the office space, the two-to-three-story office spaces, actually, I think it was two-story here. And so that, this would be very similar to building B. K would be very similar to building B in terms of individual store identities. Again, you'll notice that there really aren't any hundred thousand square foot targets or lows type footprints on the store, on this facade, because our whole concept is to try to work within the zoning in terms of tenant requirement. So the big question I know everyone's asked is what tenants are we, we having, and I really, the rumors are out there all over, I mean, I've heard people assume we are doing, I think one rumor came back that we are doing a, still doing the casino, which is not the case, as we killed that sometime back. But the, basically, let me start off with what uses I, we, we have and what types of uses. The names are hard to actually can describe because we still haven't closed on the actual transactions, but we're doing it as we're building. But we basically have a restaurant space here that we are looking to do a, one of two concepts, either a Mexican or ethnic restaurant concept, Spanish actually, and coffee, more of a, I'd call it a coffee café type establishment at that end. Here is a restaurant that we have, three other ethnic restaurants competing for right now, which could either be Japanese, I think there was even a, a smaller.
Italian, Greek?
No, it was a Italian concept, sorry, here. Then we have seafood, which is actually gone, gone to lease, and we should be executing lease at which point I can announce it, but that seafood is in this location. We have a tavern proposed up here, hence the umbrellas, and we have a series of smaller stores that are more customary to a mall, you know, you'd have some types of burgers or what have you in some of these locations here, ice cream or, not ice cream actually, funny thing about ice cream is no one wants to compete with Mike Kimball, so that's, but there has been some interest for yogurt because, and I think we were actually looking at a place that specializes in pasta. That was the one out front, which is a new concept that is healthy pasta, so whatever that means. So the restaurants are pretty much locked down, we're pretty comfortable now that we're selecting as opposed to them selecting us, so that's a good sign. We also have a home furnishings store that has agreed to come up in this top space, we've actually just finished negotiating, at least it has not been executed yet, but it, it's a store very similar to types of things that you'd find at Williams Sonoma or Sur La Tabla, but it's, they're a company that specializes in gourmet kitchens. So that, we thought added kind of the ambiance of some stuff that we would like to see happen around here. Now, building A, we are in discussions with a grocery store. You know, actually, we've been, I was surprisingly approached by, as we shared with the selectman, every grocery store, which actually caught me by surprise. We have been keeping, you know, Jack, who I know is a local guy, in the loop as to where we are. We have not closed on a deal yet, however, it is likely we will have a grocery store here. Now, there are some benefits of that, actually, if you look at all the major centers that have been built recently, the mixes of use, which allow multipurpose trips, is what's working. You know, if you look at hangup shops, it's got a grocery, crate and barrel, you know, a bunch of restaurants, and it creates for that overall twenty-four-seven type experience. Likewise, if you look at Legacy or Burlington, it's, it seems to be, that seems to be the trend that really makes, because unless you are anchored by the Target, Lowe's, and Power Center tenants, you need to create enough traffic that works. I think the ones that we've been in discussion, we've been a little bit more selective in that, as many of you know, we're hoping to have one that is already in the market as a relocation versus one that is a, a new competitor in the market. So that's, that's would be located in portion of building A. And in portion B, we have some of the other, we actually have some fashion tenants starting in this side of the thing, which would include some women's clothing, some children's clothing, and I guess some of that teenage-type clothing. And we've, we're really in discussion, there's only in building B, I think, five or six tenants, and so we're being a little bit more selective on which ones we bring in for that store. We had hoped to get someone like a, what's that?
There's my bank account.
There you go. And then on these parts, this building C, it is predominantly, since you can see the depths of the building kinda dictate, we've got a combination of sixty-foot, eighty-foot, and hundred-foot deep stores throughout the center, and that's really by design so that you can appeal to a lot of different types of use. And again, it's really the multipurpose trips of trying to get more than just one thing. It's not gonna be all fashion, it's not gonna be, you know, just a grocery-type center. So that's pretty good. And then obviously, we had the cinema, and the only two that we're still wrestling with are these two here, which we're trying, you know, that's probably the hardest-sized tenant to find, the twelve-to-fifteen thousand square foot space. We need at least three more to start phase two, so those are what we're at this point really pursuing over the next three to six months. Fortunately, that doesn't have to start this year, that would probably be a twenty, end of twenty fourteen or early twenty fifteen completion date for this part. But that's pretty much it. The other thing that we've also done to preserve is the ability to, because of the way, you know, we have permits for either one or two story buildings, and we're also still contemplating the possibility of bringing a little higher office component. If that happens, we'd wanna come before you make sure that's an acceptable change. I know we've talked about it several times, but there's also some interest in doing some major corporate expansion, which could be a nice complement. Market's still a little bit weak in terms of new buildings for the office, but it's kind of underscoring Littleton's location as part of the Think Belt and the IBMs, the Cisco's, what have you, the Red Hads. So we would hope that, we believe that there's real strong interest in doing some office development, integrating this as well. But we'll, we'll get to that probably by fall, we'll be back, we'll hopefully identifying some of those tenants as well. The only thing, you know, since it's fully permitted, it's really more to keep everyone abreast and really get feedback and input from folks as to, you know, the design, things that people think would be helpful. Short of that, you know, we might be back to you at some point, you know, discuss, you know, some possible flexibilities for limited drive-through service. We haven't decided whether we need it or not, but this particular café that we are thinking about here needs it. But I know that's a hot issue in the town, we have some thoughts on that. You know, fortunately for us, because it is in the S, in the overlay district, the fact that all the traffic and service is on privately maintained roads versus off of Route one nineteen that's town-maintained or state-maintained, you know, and we're so far in that it's clear that our impact would be pretty nominal to public ways, so it's making sense we're ultimately responsible. That's pretty much it. That's pretty much it. You know, again, Tim Power, who is our project manager, is always available for any neighbors if they have questions.
So are you going to put a dry hookup in for your sewer, if town does go sewer? Are you going to have something out at 119 or a likely location?
Let me tell you, actually, that's a good thing. We have actually brought in, we've decided to make a major feed point here, so that if you do connect in, it only has to get to this pump station, and then it pumps back. Just anticipating.
And what's the expansion capacity you're planning?
Well, it's permitted for, we built the underground systems for up to 100,000 gallons, I don't know the volumes, it seems, you know, whatever that is. We intend to use about 55,000 gallons to 60,000 gallons. We also intend to use a lot of water conservation measures, which makes, which stretches that considerably. So I think it, you know, you know, we do have some thoughts on, you know, the town's concepts.
Has anybody from the sewer committee talked to you?
They've asked us, come in, we, you know, we want to make sure that, you know, we're maintaining our own system, we're paying for our own system, we're there, but there are some advantages that I'm not sure, just, and I'm just, I'm not a resident of Littleton, so I haven't followed it very closely in terms of what all the specific nuances of the proposal are, but there are definitely some needs, I think, for, that are good for the environment in terms of pulling nitrogen, nitrogen out of the septic systems. I think it's really a cost issue of who bears the cost. Most major developments like us can afford the cost of building a plant, and for us to build a plant that is, you know, 100,000 versus 55,000 gallons, it might be, you know, hundreds of thousands more, but it's not even millions of dollars more.
Right, scale.
And, you know, I think then it could, you know, there might be ways to test the concept where we let the town own operate the plants after we built them or what have you. But we'd be happy to pay sewer fees to the town, even if we ended up building a plant, because frankly, Savos doesn't, probably will do a much better job maintaining utilities, lights, and sewer than any private enterprise could.
So, on the building mix for Phase Two, let's say you go with a office expansion and say somebody wants to locate, what's the maximum number of employees that you could locate? And how does that impact?
Yeah, we would, we, I think our plan would never be build more than 200,000 square feet, which is smaller than, you know, it's about, I think, a third, a half the size of IBM, maybe a little bit, a little bit larger than half the size of IBM space. Generally, for us, that would be, that would mean roughly 1,200 employees.
So in Space K or J?
Yeah, I think it would be K and L. I think it's, you know, to do an office, we have to really know that before we commit the cinema and the retailers up here, you can't do both.
Okay, so what cinema would be out?
This retail stands on its own and was designed to be independent of the retail entertainment that might occur on Phase Two. We, they both work, but the two schemes we have have critical mass here, and it would have critical mass with the cinema. If we go office, the office is actually a nice add-on, because a lot of office headquarters, as well as just even multipurpose office space. Tenants want to be near space that have amenities, so that's the biggest trend right now, executive office space.
How are you doing on the front door mitigation? When are we going to?
Thank you for reminding me.
You're welcome.
The, we have funded, we gifted the town an additional $300,000 to complete some overages of the state insisted, some additional scope work on Route 119. In addition to that, we're funding an additional $300,000 beyond that $300,000 to complete some additional improvements on the east side, the e-surfacing, which weren't really original contracts. The schedule is, contractor's been re-mobilized, I think he's been held up a little bit by the eight-week delay as well on this weather. He was also, in fairness to him, a little bit delayed by this paperwork issue that had to get resolved. Appreciate Jim and the entire city's efforts, they candidly did a great job keeping, many interests, shall I say, like focused on what the real purpose was, get the job finished. So I believe that, Peter's not here today, but the roadway work has resumed and...
He hasn't come yet, just because of the weather?
Oh, because of the weather, but he's prepared to come in now and finish. Most of the paving, curving is all in place, what they're really looking now to do is finish the signal installation so they can move the barriers and power, energize the system. The other big schedule constraint is the telephone poles. We are, Littleton Light has been phenomenal, absolutely, they have to be the most responsive utility we have ever worked with, probably, in the Northeast. I don't know if that's because Savos works 32 hours a day, or his whole department works that many hours, but they, they've been very responsive. Those poles have been ordered, have been installed, we just had the bid conferences for that work. One that could be the, the bug in the ome is always the private utilities like Verizon, Comcast, which they have a complicated process, but they are being responsive, and hopefully we'll get it all done. We would hope the schedule for the completion would be by the end of this summer, because we are paving, I think in June or July, in July or August, I mean, right?
They don't even have the holes in until July sometime.
Are they special poles?
Yes.
Yeah, the round.
They're laminated wood poles, 85 feet, 30 feet going around.
Eighty-five feet?
I need them left over, I need a flag pole for my places.
They're going to be 55 feet above because they have to span the driveway. I mean, they're really not that much bigger than what's there, just they're not going to have any guide wires, that's why they have to be so big.
Oh, okay.
We tried to get them into push poles.
That's, that's huge.
Wow.
They're not cheap poles, they'd be an expensive flag pole. Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, Sam, how are the retention areas coming along? At one point, you mentioned that one of the retention areas would be almost like a replication of a wetland.
Yeah, the, the, this one, this one, number one, two, and three have actually been built and have been planted. We have built the replication here, I'm sorry, right here, that's actually rooted, we, the plants went in the spring, and we're monitoring that right now, so we actually did all of the concom mitigation before we started the work.
That's great.
The relative this, we are waiting now for some of the completion, at which point we will have to go back in, we will have to, I guess, scrape out anything that is sediment that's come into this thing during construction, and then if we have to, you know, touch up the planning, but that would be, in all likelihood, a next spring when we complete and sort of refurbishing those areas.
The next driveway down past yours that's, that goes to nowhere, well, one goes into the, the self-serve place.
Yes.
There's another one.
Up here.
Yes, who owns that one?
I think that's Sherry Gould.
Oh, that one's got all kinds of debris and silt and it's all over 119.
Well, I'll take a look at that. I know there, during the rainstorms currently, just because we have such a large construction zone opened up, we can't turn the basins on yet, so it, that's part of, as soon as the basins get turned off, on, most of that goes away. I think they have trench to kind of keep it off the roadway. It's hard to do, to do the best they can, and, you know, our crews were out there Saturday to Sunday.
Almost pretty damn good mostly, and then just that one.
It's just when it's like this, it's tough, it gets, you get a lot of, it's also the kind of soil you have here, is almost like, you know, temper paint, you know, you put a little water in it, and it turns brown even though there isn't a lot of dirt in it. It's just such fine silt, it turns coffee-colored quickly.
At one point, you mentioned that there might be a nature walk around one of these areas?
Yeah, actually, we're...
Is that a way that is?
Yeah, this one here, if you go down there, there's actually the trail, the gravel trail is in. We haven't tried to make it accessible until we finish, but that's already been embedded in. We're contemplating one along here as well, but we, you know, that's sort of a, an add-on that we'd have to go through with the conservation, make sure they're okay with everything we're proposing. But this was the trail, we would love to be able to continue it along this one.
That'd be great.
So that they have...
Yeah, one person's expressed interest in that is actually Rick Finley.
Sure.
Conservation Trust, also has some material for you for one of your environmental education initiatives.
Oh, great, great.
So, it's probably worth having a conversation.
Well, Rick's got my number, so he's, he's...
I'll catch you here before you go. Sam, I want to thank you about your comments on the, on the overlay and how that has worked here. That was, that was the goal, this, this land sat almost 30 years without anything happening to it, and meanwhile, you know, a lot of, a lot of things have passed us by. This is, this is really something that everybody that I've talked to in town is just so excited about.
Well, we appreciate that, thank you.
Does anyone in the audience have any questions?
Yes, my name's Al Deacon, good evening. I have, there's someone that's really excited about this, we live down the street from the Point, and it's, it's my daughter, she has a letter for Mr. Park to read and have, she's shown quite an interest, so she's all excited about it as well as all of us, and I think they're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Let me leave this, he showed it a little bit to you, I'll just read it. My name is Elena Deacon.
Yes.
I am seven years old, I'm in first grade, and it's spelled correctly. I live in a walking distance on Russell Street. I do hip-hop, gymnastics, horseback riding, track and field, swimming, gazies, and softball. I'm very interested in what's going in at the Point for children, I would love to shake, share some of my ideas with you. I am involved with a lot of activities, this was a, you should have this letter, it's kind of cute, activities, and I have a lot of friends that love to do things. As I mentioned, I'm happy to meet with her, we're out, we're in town quite often, so if you have, Walter actually has my number, just have her call me, and I will swing by one day after school, and I'll give her a hard hat, and we'll walk the site, and she can share her ideas with us.
That's great.
Thank you very much.
That'd be nice. Thank you.
Sam, is this, are these drawings available in PowerPoint?
We will get them to Marin as we do all the time, usually a little later, but they, these are done now, so we can get them to a press.
So that's something that we could post on the website, on the town website?
Sure.
That'd be nice.
That would be wonderful.
Thank you. I think we're close enough now where, you know, we're always worried that something might change, but now that we're ordering steel, not a lot is going to change.
That's right, yeah. Well, thank you very much.
You're quite welcome.
At least we have an idea what's going on, no names yet, right?
You know, we have a webpage that will be active right after Boston I C S U, and as tenants actually execute leases, we'll be doing welcome informations on tenants, so...
So when else is that, time-wise?
I'm sorry?
When does that happen?
That will probably happen, everything always is supposed to happen next month, but it may happen at the end of the summer, when we actually go live. It's usually happens right at the time you start seeing steel going vertical, because that's when tenants are then comfortable actually putting their name on the signature block. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Hi, we have the 7:40, we have Mr. Duchesne here to talk with us about Farmers Row Estates.
Well, that's, that's a tough act to follow.
Well, you're, you're hosed.
As, as the board will recall, my associate was in a couple weeks ago to give you a quick overview of the preliminary subdivision. You know, the board had a number of comments, we've, and there were some comment letters submitted, we've taken all of those comments into consideration. We did receive recently the comments from the Board of Health, and obviously, those comments will be integrated into the definitive subdivision. As you all know, we are beginning to work on the definitive subdivision, it will look markedly different than what we've shown in the preliminary, but we had timing issues, and we had this preliminary design, which had been previously reviewed and approved by the board, so we're well aware of your input and what we need to do in designing the definitive, so I'm happy to answer any further questions you might have on the preliminary, but to be quite honest, I don't want to take up a lot of the board's time in, in, you know, discussing the redesign of this, because it will be redesigned significantly, and we will take into account all of the input that you've given us.
Are you thinking maybe late summer or early fall, something like that, or, so we don't really need to get into this, because we're...
No, we'll be prepared, Mark, to get to the nitty details when we file the definitive. I mean, I, I'd be honest, you know, we had a timing issue with respect to trying to get this in, and at least the clock ticking prior to town meeting, and that was the true basis for this, although it's certainly not a wasted effort, we got some input from you guys of what you wanted to see us consider when we did the definitive, and so that information's not lost.
And I agree, you had a timing issue, you're trying to do it before the annual meeting, the annual town meeting, but that was a month ago, I'm surprised we saw it last, that was the same thing as, you know, four years ago.
Yeah, and Don again, I, two months ago, I didn't believe that we would be signing, be filing a preliminary subdivision, but, you know, things didn't work out as we had hoped, and so we had to meet a timing deadline, so we had a preliminary ready to go, and we filed it, so.
That was...
It's just, it's just for zoning protection, it's...
Right, I, I know.
But I don't really want to get into the definitive in the open space if it's going to look markedly different.
It will, when we come back, we'll come back with a definitive in both forms, and that's when we'll do a good analysis and figure out where we want to go. Perhaps, maybe we won't, we'll see.
That brings us up to the next thing, so...
Although you would hope you'd see something midway as opposed to the final.
No.
Nope, that's how it works.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, like you said, this was more of a protection thing than anything else.
Right, yeah, I understand.
And I, and I can understand, and I don't want to waste our time or his time by going through it if it's, you know, if we haven't really ironed out what the issues are going to be as far as it goes, and, you know, it's more sensuous.
Save that effort for if and when a definitive is filed.
So let's talk about our bylaw working group, we have to give a brief update.
Are you going to take a, you need to close and vote.
You don't have to, but you should.
Well, the problem is, well, let's, let's start with it for a second, so what's going to happen to Tubing Park?
To what?
To Tubing Park.
In all likelihood?
Okay. So that blows the open space plan out of the water, because we're not going to preserve open space, it's going to be Tubing Park, that's, that's why we really don't want to get into, that's why, I don't think we really can vote on it, because there's too many issues, and I don't want to bring them up now until we actually really get into the definitive aspect.
The, the board has previously approved this preliminary.
Right.
And as you know, your vote to approve or disapprove the preliminary means nothing. So I, I guess I would ask that you close the hearing and to vote one way or another, that way it's done, and I could...
The problem is, is we're supposed to vote whether we want to see an open space plan or a, or a conventional plan.
That decision has to be made now, really?
I don't think so.
We have to give you some sort of direction as to which way we're going, that's always a, we've always done it in the past, and that's the problem, that's why...
Keep the bylaw, did you?
You know?
Close and vote tonight.
We can still have a hearing, it's just a meeting.
It's just a meeting.
But...
I don't think we have, we may not have to say that.
And I, I sort of like the idea of what Westford did, that if the preliminary isn't what people like, it's not changed, they didn't approve it, but they did go and approve the open space plan.
Well, yeah, but we can't approve that open space plan, because the open space plan basically preserves the Tubing Park, and that's not what, what our open space is all about, is, you know, our open space is land that's usable for residents and stuff like that, so that's why I don't even want to go down there.
Well, but that's a special permit, that's...
All included Tubing Park in the open space, and every Littleton resident gets a free pass.
Jimmy, you had a...
Yeah, I was going to say, I think the open space preserves the Tubing Park, it, open space was closer to the Kimball Park.
Well, there's a big chunk of it that's open space.
I think it's where the line is drawn, is, because you're looking at the colors.
This actually says parcel A, Tubing Park, this says parcel B, Open Space.
Yeah. It's, he said the colors don't, they're not shaded for the...
For the open spaces, for the...
It was just for...
Cleared area versus...
Well, I mean, we, we, why don't we just, we affirmed it four years ago, the preliminary, why don't we just...
Now, that's, I guess that's my point, because we had that discussion that they use the old subdivision regulations on this plan versus the new subdivision regulations.
Well, no, they, they've got to use the new subdivision, they don't pick grandfather for that. But this is just a preliminary plan. Who do you want us to deny, because they're using the old?
No, I'm just saying I'm hoping they, no, they know.
What we're doing has, has no...
No barrier.
It has no, it's housekeeping.
And if the roads aren't the right width, well, we can, we can qualify it by saying that, you know, approve it based on the...
Our definitive will have to meet, I think what you mean by the new regulations are not the ones just voted at the last town meeting, but the ones, yes, and I wholeheartedly agree, which is why you can approve this in concept, deny it in concept, whatever, but I'd just like closure on this, so that I can move forward with the definitive.
And make a motion to deny it in concept. For what reason? The open space isn't definitive enough, the, what is open, what isn't open, and the use, and what's going to happen with the Tubing Park?
Insufficient information.
Insufficient information, how's that do you?
Okay.
That's a motion? So, so the implications are out?
Just so we can keep moving.
You know, I'm, I'm going to, I'm in favor of approving the same thing that we did last time. At least we have something on, on record. last time. At least we have something on, on record that, that, you know, has some open space to it.
Make a motion.
You already did.
Well, you make another one. So nobody's seconded mine, so now you're on the floor.
I'll second your motion. I'll second it so that at least it's on the table.
All right, whatever.
All right.
I'll even second his.
But you added it.
I didn't second that one. I was playing with you. Stop typing.
So you're saying it doesn't make any difference which way we go with this?
It really doesn't. It's just, it's just...
Unless you feel like you have more guidance you want to give him.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I think you've heard what we like and that is a different type of open space than this.
And I promise you, it will be a different plan, very different.
So that, that's why I like what Marin had pointed out as well. Westford had done saying, ah, this is the ugly baby and, but we like the open space concept.
But we, we don't really...
We're not voting on that.
We never really got into it, the open space.
Nothing in this bylaw that says we vote on that.
Are you, are you...
Yeah.
So do we need to take any action? I thought we had to take some action by tomorrow.
Well, for the, if we may take no action on the preliminary, he gets it by default, right?
So if we deny it...
He doesn't get a piece of paper that means nothing.
Right. And so if we deny it, it has no...
The only thing that's a submission requirements, you can either vote to approve or not to approve based on the submission requirement.
Do you want to approve it, sub, the, re- re- approve the four-year-old plan that we approved four years ago?
I would motion that, that we go that way. That we re- re- approve the subdivision plan with preference for the open space concept.
Going for a while that, that's, no, no, let's just leave it at that.
Then we'd have to condition it?
No, this is just a preliminary.
Conditions don't, don't...
No, this is just a...
Then we come out with a statement? I had an impression from this time.
No, we just do it. There's eight months to do the definitive.
So there are all the 16 points there. It's supposed to have 10 minutes. What do you want to do?
Cover all 16 points?
You got a motion?
We actually have two motions here.
The only requirement he has to meet is, does he have the 16 points on his plan? That's it. He needs the 16 points. That's it.
What's the 16 points?
All existing proposed property law lines, lot boundaries, deed book, page references, adjacent ways in existence, remaining frontage, any area adjoining land in the same ownership, frontages of land adjacent to any reduced frontage law created, any existing structures and dimensions of setbacks, any existing set of structures on any remaining adjoining land owned by the applicant and dimensions of setbacks, present owner of the land, owner of the land shown on the plan and all abiding owners and assessors map, parcel numbers, location of any easements, away, public, private, across the land with a designation as to the use of the same, seal and signature of professional land surveyor, north arrow, legend, scale, date, drawing number, suitable space to record the action of the board and town clerk certification as defined in the subdivision control law, lot must be accessed from the frontage road, a locust plant, of the locust showing its relation to the surrounding area at a scale of one inch equals 600 feet extending at least 1,000 feet from the boundaries of the locust or to the next way intersecting the way in which it was located, whichever is greater, zoning classifications including overly districts, a note stating that endorsement of the plan does not signify compliance with the zoning bylaw, entirety of the lot having its boundaries charted change must be shown, location of all existing proposed monuments marking lot lines.
Peter, if you withdraw your motion, I'll move mine ahead.
Withdrawn. Let's just move on.
A motion that we approved the subdivision as submitted with a preference for the open space plan, open space concept.
I second.
And did you see this suggested motion with the conditions? Would you want to include those in your motion?
We don't...
It's just going to complicate it.
But it's just a...
Second it.
I second it.
Third it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
And getting back to our next issue, the zoning bylaw working group that we've been with. We've had one offline meeting after the initial meeting with everybody. It'd be safe to say that we made some progress there. We talked about percentages of development. We talked about extensive recreation, using that as a baseline. We're going to sit down at the next meeting and discuss what extensive recreational issues we're going, we consider applicable to, to that bylaw and what else did we talk about?
Structure, definitions, how it would be structured. I thought it was a very productive meeting.
Right, we did. We got, we started where we left off and kind of went the way I got. So now we're to definitions. So maybe we do one more meeting and then spin, bring it to the planning board and stop working as a planning board issue. I wanted to, I don't want to speak for the rest of the board, the other board, but then let's all talk about it that, because eventually we're going to have to do it in a public forum.
Oh, I agree, but I think it's best to come do that once there's actually something physically you can...
And I think after a couple more meetings...
Can discuss and now analyze. Yeah.
I think we'll be, we'll be closer.
Well, you'll know by the time you have to file the preliminary, you'll...
Oh, yeah.
You're all set.
So we're moving ahead on that, on that front and everything, any place to play nice and so forth. So good.
Were you, you were on that meeting?
Yes, I was.
Front and center.
Do you share my optimism?
Did I have your opinion?
Because since Richard doesn't believe anything I say, but that's all.
We do have minutes in here.
What do you think? Not even, no, he wants from the west of his mouth.
A little more talking than I'd like to prefer to see. I'd rather just get right to the meat and potatoes and keep moving.
Just like now.
It was good and it's going to continue to go well as long as people talk, even less than me. Let's go. Next.
So in the Reader's Digest version, it seemed like we were making, we went forward, not backwards.
We're moving forward.
Okay.
All right.
All right, good.
Thank you very much.
Anybody have any questions? Anybody in the audience have any questions?
Thank you all for such a good report.
Next.
Thank you.
That's it. Goodbye.
See you in a few weeks.
All right. We have...
Next time. You certainly don't look like your, your...
Let him go.
Assistant here.
Oh, I can agree with you there.
Oh, that's it.
I wish you'd get the perverted statements.
She's actually a partner in my firm. She's not my assistant.
She have an eight o'clock signed by law, Richard White. Four minutes to talk about the signed by law update.
Good. Does everybody have the other bylaws?
Can anyone find it?
It's interesting. So you know, that, it doesn't, you don't have to say if it's...
The whole lot should be the fat ones at the bottom.
Eventually tell them which way to go.
No, I don't. However, it does say that you're supposed to be talking about the details of what it's supposed to be.
We didn't talk about any of them. It was just skipping the, 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 it was only that I was talking about. Well, I wish that time. It's going to take ten times.
Pass this down.
Is this addressed to, like, council boards which are getting a lot of attention now?
And we could pass these sheet down, one sheet each. Now, this, I'm a member of a committee that was founded about five years ago to try to revamp and improve our signed bylaws. And we sent, part of the process was open meetings.
Three copies.
Interviews with residents and, and business owners. We sent out a questionnaire. We got answers back on preferences, things people liked, things didn't, people didn't like. And we looked at various signed bylaws throughout the state. Concaut had a great one. Dennis had a, the town of Dennis had almost everything the town of Concaut had, and even better. After about a four-year process, we arrived at the document you have in front of you. And, and that was, that document was sent off to the Attorney General about three years ago. And we got the blessing back from the Attorney General that it would, it would stand, they approved it. And now I'll just give you a brief overview of what it does. We're going from about a two-page signed bylaw to 31-page signed bylaw. Now, it's, it's a, the number of pages that it's at because it has almost every kind of sign that you can imagine listed. Now, the, the letter that I handed out to begin basically describes the steps that we take from here. First step is we got to remove the old signed bylaw if this, this is going to be put in place and that has to happen at town meeting. Then we have to add this new signed bylaw as a general bylaw. The old signed bylaw is under zoning. That's why we have to remove it. This will go in under general bylaw. A general bylaw allow the, a couple of, a couple of things. It'll, it'll allow the building inspector or his representative to, to enforce it as opposed to the ZVA. And it'll also allow pre-existing conditions to be mandated to, to change if we, if we so, you know, if this goes forward with the language it has. This will, this, along with it, there'll be tax incentives for businesses to bring their signs up to new standards. The town would create a, a sign committee to assist the building commissioner in enforcement of, of the new bylaw. We'd have, there'd be a permit application similar to what there is right now. There'd be notification to all the business owners. All the signs in town would be tagged and identified. Right now, there's, there's no control over what's, what's out there and many of the signs that are out there right now are in violation of our own signed bylaw, including some or a town sign. So the first few pages talks about the things I've just spoken to you about, the, the permits, the pre-existing conditions, abandoned signs, illumination, establishment of the sign board of appeals, amendments, how to amend it, and severability. Now, then it gets into the bulk of the signed bylaw is basically identifying what's accepted and what's not. It's a matrix. And the matrix is set up so that you, well, let me start this way. It's, we go into a set of definitions because right now with all the various types of signs that are out there, we need to identify. For instance...
Well, who's going to pay for this? That's, that's the biggest hang-up. It's why you just told it.
Well, put enforcement actually, because that is an issue. It'd be nice to see some provisions.
Roland's been a senior assistant, associate.
Roland's allowed enforcement?
Yeah, well, let me, let me finish. First we have, first we have our definitions and then we get into the matrix that describes the various signs along with photos of each sign, so there's, there's no issue as to what, what's covered and what's not covered. Some signs are allowed to be up certain amounts of times. That's listed. Some signs can be a certain height. That's listed. Farmers, some signs have exemptions, like farmers have, can, can have almost any kind of sign. And it prohibits lots of signs that, that, like banners, like highly backlit signs. We have, we have one of those in town. Balloon signs, animated signs. So, so it's, it's a pretty, pretty well-thought-out list of...
Can I have your question?
List of items, yeah.
Or can I make a suggestion?
Please.
You should list all the permitted signs up front and put all the not permitted ones in the back. And then why are you allowing drive-through menu signs when you don't allow drive-throughs?
Good question. Cover, to cover every single type of possible sign.
You're saying it's permitted.
Let's see.
It's on page 17 of 31. Same thing with the electric message center, which denotes a burger thing center. Says it's permitted.
No, it means, permit is required.
It's permitted.
The P means the permit's required.
All right, but you can have it.
Maybe you used to talk this in part.
Didn't share any other point in this?
This, yeah, this went before the...
That one gets snuck in, didn't it?
The zoning board of appeals.
Sure did. Yeah. Has to be proof right again, apparently.
I go back to the issue of, we're dumping this all on Roland and I was Roland going to be able to afford to pay.
Okay, and that was one of the questions. That was the only question I asked him, you know, before this meeting. I figured we'd get back to him with several other questions.
That's not really our...
He came up with, no, you'd need to talk about what the fiscal impacts would be if you're going to take a position on it.
Yeah.
And for the first year, about $20,000 for an assistant to get started on...
$20,000 for an assistant to do nothing more but enforce the signed bylaw?
Yeah.
No.
Well, it, there are a lot of requirements here.
They get, they, there is a grace period, correct?
Three years.
Three years.
That's still...
Within three years...
Right, that's 10 hours a week.
Oh, wait a minute. Let's just say, they get a grace period, three years. So no real action has to take, you don't have to hire anybody for three years in reality. Shame me out.
People abuse it.
So everybody who has, is, gets, everyone who's got a sign gets one of these pieces of paper and says, this is what you need to be in compliance with by January 1st of 2015, 16, whatever the hell the date ends up being. Anybody in violation of those right now, you know you're going to get a $50 a day fine or whatever the fine period is. I didn't read the fine things. So it gives them three years. We got three years. And at that time, a lot of people may just turn around and do the sign work themselves already. Say, hey, I don't want to get the ticket. I will take care of my sign.
But it's still the administrative of the people that are the new ones that are coming and everything else.
It's a lot, a lot of work.
They apply for a permit. They made it, they made, you had to get permits for, for fences.
Don't you have an application fee?
No.
Yeah, there'd be an application fee that goes along with this.
Frank Taylor House in Bedford. What is he going to do, go jump through that crap? Trust me. I, I, I get that. The point is, it's going to add an administrative fee.
Now, the, the estimated $20,000 for the first year involves inventorying all the signs in town. Now, before you, before you really stock down the road of enforcement, you need to know what you have. Inventory, tag, every sign in town will have to be re-permitted, but there'll be no re-permit charge and further at the outset.
Providing it's a...
You need a database.
We have to, basically, start from scratch. You're taking it out of, you're taking it out of...
Exactly.
You're taking it out of, it's accessible.
Yeah, the, the, the goal here would be to have all of these, all the signs in town on an electronic inventory, all tagged, so that you can, you can have everything on a handheld device and when you, when you go buy a sign that you're not sure if it's updated on its permit, you can just plug it in, just like the parking meter people.
Is there an app for that?
Yeah, there is.
Yeah. So we don't have to buy a handheld device and use one of these?
Yeah, you can get it, put it in the database.
Okay, that sounds good. Next.
I like it. I guess you got to change that thing with the driver's.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we'll, we can...
You have to read everyone implying to the numbers.
So if you guys can get back to me with whatever changes like Jerry just did, we can amend this again, bring it back in, the next time or, or the time, time after that we meet and, and then see if we can move it forward to town meeting in the fall.
Very good.
Is there some other financial model? Because, you know, obviously things aren't enforced now because there isn't the stat. That's the big gap now. And it's, yeah, we're always be spending all this time out doing sign enforcement. So I mean, is there some sort of financial model?
See, you mentioned $20,000. I mean, fees is a possibility, fines.
Right.
Be even bally fees, yeah.
Right now...
We'll be self-funding in two years.
Yeah. Right now, there's no, there's no funding for any sign enforcement of all the signs we have in town. There's no funding for that right now. The only way that Roland...
And that's why there are abuses and that's why it's not enforced.
And that's why Roland has enough trouble with what is in front of him now. It's going to make his job even worse.
So high of somebody.
Here's how, here's how this... Here's how here's how this, whether or not there's the funding for this in place, what this does is this changes the rules so that anybody who puts a sign in going forward will have to comply by these new rules, whether there's anybody there to enforce them or not. There's no one there to enforce them right now. I mean, Roland goes out on on calls when there's a complaint, but but he would go out on calls and this is a, if this is...
That's a good idea, I like it.
We have a signed bylaw now, and it's hard to enforce it as it is, and it's not thirty-one pages long, it's two pages long. So now we're gonna have a thirty-one-page bylaw, and we're gonna have to...
Easy to enforce, tell you what you can and can't do. There it is, black and white, done.
But no one's still gonna do it, they're gonna do what they want.
Then they start getting fined.
We've we've been fining people for years.
Have they been paying?
No, of course not.
Well, then, shut the business down. Don't get no law on there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Roland's got enough stuff going.
I like the sign bylaw after thirty days.
We just want his job, I got it.
I don't want that job. I want nothing to do with town government.
So we have recourse, we can shut them down.
There's one thing that our abuses on that I don't think are addressed here that should be addressed, and that's political campaign signs on public land, and the people abuse it.
This this has this has addressed them now.
Okay, are there fines or mechanisms to remove the signs?
Who are you getting fined? The county?
Well, the there's no...
The county to count.
Yeah, you can't you can't put a sign on public land, and...
Is it dealt with in an improper manner so someone doesn't get some benefit of violating?
As an yes, as an illegal sign, it'd be fined, as a fine system that goes along with...
Where is that, what what page?
My, when we meet in July.
In the in the upfront section where it talks about the fines that go along, fines and penalties.
And those signs in particular, so no one squabbles about it.
Do we have anything in common?
It has been an issue in the past.
We can, whatever, I suggest you review this and whatever edits you wanna include in it, we can we can do that.
Why don't we put it up for August in case we decide not to have a meeting in July if we get lucky?
Go over that, you'll have one meeting in July.
Oh, cool. We'll see. All right, we'll put it up for August.
One of the things this does is it covers all the signs that our sign bylaw doesn't cover, right?
Yeah, we're just, let's get it.
Like neon, our sign bylaw allows two colors, this allows multicolors.
Why be nice to me? Don't be nice to me. Just those things, let's just move on.
All right, we're done.
All right.
So thank you. So everybody is on...
Yes, Mr. Sussman.
You mentioned here a sign committee. Would they go around and inspect some of the enforcement?
Yeah, they're gonna give paintball guns.
The way the way it's described, it's it's the the enforcement officer would be the I believe it's the building inspector, I'd have to check, but there's one one person and or his designee, and that designee could be actually anybody. It could be a citizen, it could be another town official, or it could be multiple people.
Okay, but the sign committee doesn't have, like, it's identified offenders?
Yeah, they just know, they didn't, it says in here the committee's just to help assess a sign if it's deemed to be in violation.
Okay, so that's part of the enforcement?
Right, but they're not the ones going around the town, taking pictures of signs, and then...
Well, why not? I mean, why not?
Well, it just doesn't say that.
Well, it it says to the the building commissioner, help assist the building for some enforcement.
There's another edit for your thing.
Paintball guns and slung shots. That the committee will require to get two hours of community service a week to go look inside. Wow, that's what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, give it to the seniors so that they can take off on their taxes. All right.
For chief of management, it's to make it workable. I mean, I I think that's the intent. There's gonna be a fair amount of work involved.
We can we can put the, I don't mind putting, we can put a number on it, twenty grand if you want, but honestly, I mean, the selectmen of the administrative part of this town, they're supposed to solve that problem.
Well, this is a mechanism, it's a point-together process, I mean, this is deliberate.
Just propose it, I think the selectmen figure it out.
When we were revamping the sign bylaw, we were doing this specifically, we were charged with just specifically creating a new bylaw. We weren't charged with how how it was gonna be funded.
But it's only part of a problem, you know, solving...
Is the ZVA back this?
The ZVA is is totally behind this. I I went before the ZVA.
The ZVA wants...
Yeah, this is this, the ZVA reviewed this and they're totally behind it.
Did you get a letter, a letter from the ZVA co-endorsement or what?
It's probably in their minutes. Now, the keep in mind is the the sign bylaw that we have in place right now is almost sixty years old, and it talks about signs that don't exist anymore, and it doesn't address signs that do exist right now.
Or will in the future.
Yeah, for instance...
In some cases, it doesn't.
You don't have to review this content every year for a decision.
Yeah, I mean, that would make sense as well, to have a periodic review of what should be...
Because, for instance, you know, people don't use neon anymore, but our old sign bylaw says says neon, talks about neon. They use that spaghetti plastic, what do you call that stuff?
Fiber optic.
Fiber optic. Now, everybody uses fiber optic. We could have fiber optic all over town right now, under our current bylaw, disprohibits that.
Good call, move on.
Okay, we're done. Okay. So are we gonna back this thing up that's been added?
We're gonna take another look at it in...
Yeah.
Until July.
Yeah, come back, true, Maren, come back to me with any edits that you can think of.
Okay, we have an eight fifteen...
Roland, is there no drive-throughs?
Informal inspection, inspection, commercial solar PV, middlesex materials?
These are the same guys you did before?
They actually build it?
Are these different guys?
This is different.
You guys actually...
Different, different site.
This is different.
Different site, different site. We haven't done it.
You haven't seen this site?
That's why they look different. I don't know, they're both younger though.
My name is Joel Levine. Representing Middlesex Corporation. We just wanted to use this time to...
Levine?
Levine, yes.
Middlesex. Is he related to the other Levine?
You're the only one.
Who?
That's my father.
Your attorney is your father?
Yep. Uh, we just wanted to use this time to let the board know what we are proposing.
Oh, right.
This is Chris Rose, representing Beaumont Solar.
So this will be behind the building?
As you face the building, kinda to the right before the slope for aggregates, for here's just some other pictures, these are how they, these are just how the ground mounts. These go in, they drive in posts into the ground, yeah, which is a similar project.
They're not the ones out in Anheuser's doing this, are they?
No, we're out in New Bedford.
Really? There's a huge one going on up in Anheuser's.
Yeah, these these runs all over the place, yeah.
Yeah, why? What's up with that?
Uh, it's it's all about the incentives. There's a lot of states...
It's all tax credit?
Tax credits, Massachusetts is somewhat of a hotspot for solar, and, yeah, absolutely.
Are they are you guys, are they selling the credits?
No, we don't get them.
It's a developer. Who's selling the credits?
We're working, yeah, we're working through that. We get the credits by...
You get it, you guys pawn it all.
It's almost we put it to the pool.
Are you selling this back to the town, in fact, you're...
You guys sell those kind of buys?
Yeah, we've been in touch with the Littleton Electric.
What's the kilowatt generation?
Oh, three, three hundred and eight.
Is that right?
It's about three hundred and seventy watts.
Three hundred and seventy?
Yeah. You know, we'll get final design.
Is he gonna have to cut back any trees or...
We are looking to that, might have to trim some bushes up.
Just trim it back.
Four hundred kilowatts?
Yeah.
Yeah. Are those better, I mean, are the panels getting better, is that...
The panels from, I mean, I've been in solar for a couple of years now, nothing drastic with the panels, to be honest with you. Yep, as far as pricing goes, they came down quite a bit, we're actually seeing them go up, but as far as how much they're producing, no, we haven't seen anything anything drastic. A little more efficient, no nothing crazy.
What are the what is the half-life on these things? Ten years?
No.
No. They are, they're supposed to be, you know, depending on the panels, and if they're maintained, about twenty years.
Twenty years.
Yep, twenty plus.
So twenty years of producing, they'll be producing half the amount of electricity that produce brand-new?
Well, they're supposed to be, the the grade factor is one percent a year.
They'll be producing about eighty percent in twenty years.
Eighty percent in twenty years. Now, twenty years from today, you know, who probably...
But that's that's what they're maintaining. Now, maintaining them means keeping the the glass on the surface clean. Who who does who does that?
A bit squeegee. Um, what about the solar layer from that? Is that that they're gonna be theoretically facing the load, aren't they?
Yeah.
Theoretically, we...
Well, yeah, theoretically.
Hopefully. They're going to agree, and that's part of, you know, as we work through the process and things like that and doing design.
I don't, I've never, I've seen, yeah, there's there's a big, big solar project right up near ninety-three in Boston, I think National Grid did it, Roland, right off the highway, no issue there. Coming up, I just came up from New Bedford, there's a big one right on the side of the highway coming up here, I wanna say non-issue as far as the...
Panels are designed to absorb the sunlight and the bouncing.
Are these are these articulating to follow the sun?
No. Nope.
They're fixed. Who maintains the ground around them, keeps the grass cut?
No, it's actually just like we take out the grounds like we do normally.
Yep.
So.
Right. What about the credits that are just going down?
What's that?
I'm sorry. There's credits you get for installing these panels.
Yes.
And then you sell the credits. It's almost like the stock market for the most part, you're buying at such a point, and then you put them on, and then they're sold. I heard that they were dropping.
They have, they have dropped.
And the one in Ludenburg, you guys have anything to do with that one?
We did not.
That one apparently is going away of sorts until they can line up the correct funding for it, apparently. And what happens is, it really doesn't matter to us whether they makes money or doesn't, correct?
No, they entered a long, I think they went the other way, they entered a long-term agreement, it's already bought and sold.
Well, I don't know about that that project in Ludbrook, but I know that did this project, this may be used to offset the electricity use at that building. So there's a direct correlation between Middlesex's interest right there, opposing the other farms, or they gotta go find somebody to navigate it and something like that, so. And again, Middlesex has been here for a while.
And again, the credit, the credit is basically, the government's giving you a credit for putting these things in, and then da-da-da-da-da, so. Are you gonna wind up this one?
No.
It's gonna stay all on the flat?
It might go up a little bit, but again, as we get it tightened up, you know, I don't think it wasn't to run it all the way up, but...
The only issue I can think of with this is that unlike the one down at the distribution plant, you can't see that, everyone's gonna drive out and say, yeah, well...
No, they can see it, but it's gonna be like concrete. It's gonna be like MCI concrete, where they're out in the middle of the field, people see it.
But I know, but that's a prison, and nobody has any say in that. I'm talking about acts. Yeah. It's, you know, if somebody, would you just catch a lot of hay off if it's an eyesore?
Maybe they have to do something about screening in front of it.
Yeah, that's what I was calling, would you, would you guys screen harder?
I don't mean screen like, you don't have to put trees next to it, I mean, if you could just break the line of sight.
I don't know, maybe what we could do is as we work through the process, maybe there's a way we can get some street elevation views for the board, so they can at least, you could see what it we think it's gonna look like from the street, and then we'll make a determination on that. 'Cause it is gonna be, if you look at there, it's 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 not far back, but it's not on the street, and it's back away, so it might, yeah.
Not, I'm I'm just, I don't know that...
No, what I'm saying is like a theoretically, a planting here, and the panels are gonna be here, that, you know, that distance might be, the the screening may not be much.
That's what I mean, I'm not saying you have to put a line of trees in front of this, I mean, if you can find a way to just block it.
Oh, no, but obviously, we could probably, if screening was needed, we'd be further up towards the street, and that'd probably be fine, so.
Do these get, how are these permitted? Just are they building permit for the haul down and wind?
Well, we have to get a building permit, which is off a site plan approval from this board. We also have to get an agreement from Littleton Light.
Yeah.
Which is actually one of the questions I have for this board, is does this board wants to come back when that agreement is done? Does this board wants to come back halfway through to touch base and show you where we're at? What would this board prefer to say?
Well, we had that, we had an agreement with the other guys, we knew, 'cause they already, they had sold basically Littleton Light and Water, they sold the rights for twenty years.
You're only gonna sell the excess of Littleton Light and Water right now.
Yes.
Whatever would be connected.
Right. That should be a big deal.
One of the conditions for issuing a permit is that they have an agreement in place. Do you need that agreement in place before they apply, or can they get it?
If they wanna start down the site plan process without it and...
You can't go without it, right? I mean, you gotta get it anyways.
Well, we have to get it, but I didn't, I wanna know what this, how this board wants to do.
You wanna start the site plan without it and and work on it while you're working on this, that's...
So we could do the two things.
And you can always condition it at the end, and then they can...
All right, so when we get, we could, we could, if we choose, we could do them tandem. We could be here and all that, yeah. Okay.
I mean, I I don't anticipate you having a problem getting it, that's what I'm saying, like, I don't...
That's that's good to hear.
Sixty-one and a half thousand or whatever. What's in our bylaw, I mean, he set up for it.
Barry, you have a question?
No questions, just a statement. There are some people who think that solar is a great way to go, and they don't, they would like to see it, they would like to see neon, solar panels, all kinds of alternative energy, so that would be positive.
You wanna eyeball those panels off the road every day, like...
No, hopefully we do something about the screening. The Middlesex was, sometimes in the backwoods, see, this is gonna be the...
Those people are here on this board.
Yeah, be a little more, we'll be a little more.
I mean, the building is actually quite attractive, some architects spend a lot of time to make that attractive. They're putting full solar panels out, you don't want that necessarily to distract from what's on it. So some screening, breaking lines of sight may make sense. I mean, haven't you done this elsewhere? Hasn't this been an issue elsewhere?
Well, I I work for Middlesex, but I'm sure that they have done that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we've done about a hundred and fifty installations in Massachusetts.
Hasn't this been an issue about the scenic look at and glayer and things of that nature?
Absolutely, there's been a couple, we've seen a couple solar farms go up in residential neighborhoods where it's become a problem. Some people do not like to look at them, every town has different bylaws, and some people say, hey, you gotta put a berm or bushes in front of them, every every town is different.
There must be some best practices that you're exposed to that, but...
You know, and my feeling on that is that when, if they're visible, that means people see them and they know that Littleton is is, you know, eco-friendly, we're looking at see them and they know that Littleton is, is, you know, eco-friendly, we're looking at alternative ways of power, and, and it's, it's almost like a Leeds thing, Littleton is...
Is there a, yeah, I'd like to think of, the ones that I've seen where they're actually mechanical and they follow the sun as it goes, do those produce that much more power that they're advantageous to have?
They do, but we do not recommend them at Beaumont, number one, because they're